Milwaukee City Council to order, will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America. Intuitively public approach to stance. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we please do roll call? Mayor Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Here.
Councilmember Crone?
Here.
Councilmember Grove?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Here.
Agenda item D is open forum. Open forum is for anyone here tonight to address the council on any subject over which the council has the authority to act or on any item on the agenda other than a public hearing. Does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council at this time? If so, please approach the podium or raise your hand. If you're participating via Zoom, you can raise your hand by hitting Raise Hand icon under Reactions controls. There are no hands raised in Zoom. Open forum is closed. All right. Agenda item E is Agenda Approval. Can I get a motion? Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Agenda item G1 is a public hearing on plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the 2025 ADA Sidewalk Improvements Project. Now declare this public hearing open. Have we received any correspondence on this? No, none received in the city clerk's office. Thank you. Director Kester?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, council members. Let's leave that alone. That does say up there, the 2025 ADA Sidewalk Improvement Project. This is the public hearing for a project that includes all labor, materials, and equipment necessary for approximately 565 square yards of PCC concrete sidewalk and miscellaneous associated work with, including cleanup and restoration. This project is in our approved CIP as well as our draft CIP. It's an annual project with $100,000 budget. We've combined last budget cycle with this one for a $200,000 total project budget. We do have a interim completion date of August 15th, 2025, with a final completion date of September 30th, 2025 for this project. Happy to take any questions if you have any, but we do recommend holding the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council and voice their comments or questions on this public hearing item? If so, please approach the podium, or if participating via Zoom, click on the Raise Hand icon under Reactions controls. There are no hands raised in Zoom. Does council have any questions at this time? And now declare this public hearing closed. Agenda item G2 is a public hearing on the plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for University Avenue Area Improvements Phase One Project. Now declare this public hearing open. Becky, have we received any correspondence on this? No correspondence received in the city clerk's office. Director Kester?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a public hearing for a project that includes all labor, equipment, and materials for the construction of University Avenue. Up on the screen is an exhibit showing that location. This is the approximate intersection of 10th Street and University Avenue. This consists of 11,900 square yards of PCC concrete, 5,500 tons of asphalt, 1,800 feet of linear feet of water main, 3,900 feet of storm sewer, 460 linear feet of sanitary sewer, significant amount of grading, subgrade preparation, and baca culvert constructions, as well as two pedestrian underpasses for this project. This project is in our approved FY '25 CIP with a total product budget of $17 million. We have a November 21st, 2025 interim completion date for all grading structures, utility, sidewalks, trails, and roadway paving. And then we have a final site restoration of May 31st, 2026 completion date for this project. Happy to take any questions if you have any, but staff recommends holding the public hearing. Thank you.
Does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council at this time and voice their comments or questions on this public hearing item? If so, please approach the podium, or if participating via Zoom, click on the Raise Hand icon located in the Reactions controls. There are no hands raised in Zoom. Got distracted by the boxes moving around and skipped that part. Sorry, Becky. Does council have any questions at this time? All right. Now declare this public hearing closed. Agenda item G3 is a public hearing on the transfer of property related to the South Outfall Sewer to Des Moines Metropolitan Wastewater Reclamation Authority. Now declare this public hearing open. Becky, have we received any correspondence on this? No, none received in the city clerk's office. Thank you. Director Kester?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a public hearing for the proposed transfer to the Des Moines Metropolitan Wastewater Reclamation Authority, also known as the WRA. This is pursuant to a 2080 agreement from back in 2016, when we started the project known as the South Outfall Sewer. We have about 37 permanent sanitary sewer easements that were acquired with this project. Apologize for the map being a little small on the screen, but on the left is an exhibit of that sewer, starting from Interstate 80 and progressing north to where the former wastewater treatment facility was located there, just south of the Waki Cemetery. The map on the right represents those 37 easement locations and the various property owners that they are located on. Per that, as I mentioned, the 2080 agreement, this was part of the responsibility of the city to transfer these easements at the conclusion of this project to the WRA for their purposes for maintaining and operating the sanitary sewer trunk line. Staff recommends holding the public hearing tonight, and I'm happy to take any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council and voice their comments or questions on this public hearing item? If so, please approach the podium or click on the Reactions controls. There are no hands raised in Zoom. Does council have any questions at this time? And now declare this public hearing closed. Agenda item G4 is a public hearing on a proposal to enter into a Fifth Amendment to the Agreement for Private Development and Minimum Assessment Agreement with the Quarter at Waki LLC. Now declare this public hearing open. Have we received any correspondence? No, none received in the city clerk's office. Thank you. Director Brown?
Good evening, Mayor and council. The proposed Fifth Amendment to the Private Agreement and Minimum Assessment Agreement with the Quarter includes the addition of real estate. You may recall that we made an addition of real estate to the Quarter Urban Renewal area, and that's also reflected in this agreement as well in the northwest corner of the development property, which you can see kind of on the screen, which is the second hotel and then a building F7 here. So that will be about approximately five acres that will be added to the property, and so that will be reflected in the legal description updates as well. Additionally, there will be an increased investment in the minimum improvements, raising the commitment from about $89 million to about $116 million. And while the rebate percentages will remain the same unchanged, the total rebate amount will increase because of the changes in the minimum assessed values. The grant schedules will be adjusted as well due to some updates in terms of the, some of the dates will move forward, and some of them may change just about a year or so. But those will be adjusted to align with the new investment. Staff recommends a public hearing. I'm also happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council and voice their comments or questions on this particular hearing item? If so, please approach the podium or click on the Raise Hand icon located in the Reactions controls. There are no hands raised in Zoom. Does council have any questions at this time? All right. Now declare this public hearing closed. Agenda item H1 for 2025 ADA Sidewalk Improvements Project H1A. Consideration of Approval of a Resolution Approving Plan, Specifications, Form of Contract, and Estimate of Cost. Can I get a motion?
So moved. Second.
Rudy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The plan specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost have been unfiled with the city clerk for review upon request. And I failed to mention up on the screen, that is the exhibit of our locations, various locations around the community, down on West Town Parkway, Southeast LA Grant, over on Trident Circle, and up on Bowman, and then over on Forest Street would be those locations. So staff recommends approval of the resolution at this time. Happy to take questions if you have any.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Please vote. Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item H1B, Consideration of Approval of a Resolution Awarding Contract. Can I get a motion? Move to approve?
Second.
Rudy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Up on the screen is a bid tab summary. You can see up there, we had 10 general contractors submit bids for this project on December 18th, 2024. Two of those bids, I'll note at the bottom, were rejected due to the contractor failing to use the correct proposal form with their bid submittal. However, with those rejections, we still had successful bids submitted. As you can see, the percentage under was significance from the engineer's estimate at $200,000. Skoll Trucking out of Johnson, Iowa was the apparent low bidder at $129,662.77. This project, as I mentioned, is in our approved CIP. Staff does recommend approval of the contract to Skoll Trucking in Johnson, Iowa, and the dollar amount shown up on the screen. We have had experience with them in the past. They did some clearing and grubbing on the South Outfall Sewer, actually, now that I think of it, that we just spoke on earlier, a few years back. So we did ask for other references specific to this concrete work. They didn't really have any to provide at this time. However, with their list of resources that they provided in their conference, we're confident moving forward with them at this time. So not the best response, I assume, but that's really what we can offer for reference checks on that. So.
Any questions? Please vote. Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Agenda item H2 for University Avenue Area Improvements Phase One Project. H2A, Consideration of Approval of a Resolution Approving Plan, Specifications, Form of Contract, and Estimate of Cost. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Rudy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The plan specifications, form of contract, estimate of cost are on file with the city clerk for review upon request. Staff recommends approval of the resolution. Happy to take any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions?
Is this one also 35% under? Close. I thought I had you there. 30. Okay.
Please vote. Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
H2B, Consideration of Approval of a Resolution Awarding Contract. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Up on the screen, you can see the bid tab summary. We had 12 general contractors submit bids for this project on December 19th, 2024. Elder Corporation out of Des Moines was the apparent low bidder at $10,68,807.0. You can see quite a bit of competitiveness there, but yes, we had significant submittals and percentages under as we did on the prior project. As I mentioned earlier, this is in the approved CIP with a budget of $17 million, so we're certainly confident we'll be under that with this construction contract moving forward. So staff does recommend award to Elder. We do have experience with working with them on prior projects of this similar nature, so really no concern from staff's perspective on their ability to complete this. So with that, staff recommends awarding the project to Elder Corporation of Des Moines, Iowa for $10,68,807.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Please vote. Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item H3, Consideration of Approval of a Resolution Approving the Disposal of Interest in Real Estate Pursuant to Iowa Code Section 364.7 for the South Outfall Sewer. Can I get a motion? Move to approve?
Second.
Rudy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll just add that city legal, as well as WRA legal, had reviewed all the necessary paperwork in ensuring that these are being transferred on the forms that were acceptable to the WRA, as well as making sure everything was on the up and up, I suppose, from both of their perspectives. So everything does match with the agreement, the 2080 agreement that we're required to do with these transfers. So again, staff recommends approval of the resolution at this time. Happy to take any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Please vote. Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
And item H4, Consideration of Approval of a Resolution Approving and Authorizing Execution of a Fifth Amendment to the Agreement for Private Development and Minimum Assessment Agreement with the Quarter at Waki LLC. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve? Second.
Jennifer?
Nothing further more to add, really, except that we're excited to see some of the projects come to fruition and finally be able to announce some of the things exciting that are happening in the quarter. And staff would recommend approving the resolution.
Are there any questions? Please vote. Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Agenda item I1, Consider agenda Part 1. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve?
Second. Any discussion? Please vote. Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item I2, Consider agenda Part 2. Can I get a motion? Move to approve?
Second.
Any discussion?
I will be abstaining due to a professional conflict.
Please vote. Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Abstain.
Item I3, 2025 Appointments. 3A for the appointment of the mayor pro tem and various city council liaisons. I'd like to appoint as mayor pro tem Charlie Buttonburg, MAC liaison, Rob Grove, Bravo liaison, Anna Pierce, Chamber of Commerce liaison, Chris Crone, City Personnel Committee, myself, Chris Crone, and Ben Sinclair. Can I get a motion?
This is, your appointments, this one doesn't require a motion or approval.
I only do it once a year, and I always forget. All right.
Can we override her and veto her?
Your chance to do that was last week, when I asked. All right. For item 3B, this is a resolution. Consideration of Approval of a Resolution Approving Mayor's Appointment to the City of Waki Representative to the Iowa Confluence Water Trails Board of Directors. I'm reappointing Ben Sinclair to this role. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve? Second.
Please vote. Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item 3C, Consideration of Approval of a Resolution Approving Mayor's Appointment to City of Waki Representation to the Wastewater Reclamation Authority Policy Board and Technical Board. As the Policy Committee Rep, I'm appointing Brad Dietz. Policy Committee Alternate is Rudy Kester. Technical Committee Representative, Rudy Kester. Technical Committee Alternate, Tim Royer. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve?
Second. Any discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
Sorry, my microphone was off. Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item 3D, Consideration of Approval of a Resolution Approving Mayor's Appointment to City of Waki Representation to the Walnut Creek Watershed Authority Board of Directors, Representative Rudy Kester, and Alternate Sarah Capos and Tim Royer. Can I get a motion? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item 3E, Consideration of Approval of a Resolution Approving Mayor's Appointment to City of Waki Representation to the Des Moines Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. As Policy Committee Representative, I appoint myself. As Policy Committee Alternate, Brad Dietz. Technical Committee Representative, Nick Osborne. Technical Committee Alternate, Rudy Kester. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve?
Second. Any discussion? Please vote. Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Item 3F, Consideration of Approval of a Resolution Approving Mayor's Appointment to City of Waki Representation to the Mid-Iowa Planning Alliance Board of Directors. I am appointing Jennifer Brown. I suppose I should send your chair. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve?
It'd be funny if you did.
Please vote. Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item 3G, Consideration of Approval of a Resolution Approving Mayor's Appointment to City of Waki Representation to the Dallas County Emergency Management Commission and E-911 Commission. Emergency Management Commission Representative, Rob Grove. Emergency Management Alternate, Clint Robinson. E-911 Commission, Rob Grove. E-911 Commission Alternate, Clint Robinson. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item I4, Consideration of Approval of an Ordinance to amend Chapter 169 zoning ordinance city of Waki, Iowa by rezoning certain property from A1 to K-R-R, parcel to be known as West Kettlestone Lakes. This is the third and final reading. Move to approve the third reading of the ordinance and title only and place it on final passage.
Second.
Andy?
Well, good evening, Mayor Clark and council members. For consideration tonight is the third and final reading for the Kettlestone Lakes rezoning. This is a approximately 150 acres in area, outlined in blue on the screen. The city owns just slightly over 10 acres of it. It's the yellow area, the yellow triangular area on the southeast side of the site. Proposed to be rezoned to Kettlestone Retail Regional. Staff has nothing further to add, but staff would recommend approval of the third and final reading for Kettlestone Lakes. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Please vote. Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
You got off very easy tonight, Andy. A third reading.
It doesn't happen very often.
Item I5, Consideration of Approval of a Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Acquisition of Property and Property Interests for the Alice's Road Improvements Phase 1A Project. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve?
Second. Rudy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Up on the screen is an exhibit showing the Alice's Road Widening Improvements, or Alice's Road Improvements Phase 1A, so from Northeast Horizon Drive to just south of Dalewood Drive in Waki. Essentially, what this action is tonight, we are ordering construction of this project this evening, City of Council for Waki is, and then this Thursday, City of Clive Council is ordering construction for this. So we plan to accept bids in early February, February 4th specifically for this project, and then we'll report those bids at the February 18th council meeting here for y'all. But this action tonight essentially is under and following the provisions of Chapter 6B of the Iowa Code, where a government body which proposes acquiring non-agricultural property through the use of acquisition, including eminent domain. So essentially, this is authorizing the project, authorizing the acquisition of property, and then if necessary, using eminent domain for that acquisition. We have engaged the four property owners on the west side of Alice's Road already and have started those conversations for acquisitions. Don't really anticipate we'll be going to this step with them, but to ensure that we stay on schedule with this project, because it is somewhat of an aggressive schedule for construction, for bidding, and then ultimately, construction, we want to have this card in our back pocket so to ensure that we do stick to that schedule. So this action tonight essentially authorizes the city legal staff to file that necessary action with the county to secure a condemnation hearing board date with them to make sure that we can get everything acquired appropriately and timely. So as I mentioned, I don't anticipate us going to this step. We are having good faith discussions with those four property owners. It's just really getting kind of dotting the i's, crossing the t's with them all. So happy to take any questions at this time. But staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Can you remind me how many property owners on the east side?
On the east side, there would be, I think, seven, if you want to say, in total. And so the City of Clive will be taking actions for their, same actions to implement or use eminent domain, but they have started those conversations as well. Would have liked to see them a little further along in those conversations, but it's up to them to execute and complete all those. So.
Okay. Any other questions? Please vote. Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item I6, for the 2023 Asphalt Overlay Improvements Project, Ashworth Drive from Fourth Street to 10th Street. Item 6A, consideration of approval of a motion approving change order number two to the Grimes Asphalt and Paving Corporation, decreasing the contract in the amount of $56,098.78. Can I get a motion?
So moved? Second.
Rudy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This change order is to adjust the contract quantities or planned quantities to as constructed quantities. So the biggest thing here is we didn't do as many pulled up patches as were anticipated or assumed for the project, as well as some other miscellaneous things that really, that adds up to the $56,000 approximate reduction in the cost. So at this point in time, staff recommends, recommends approval of the change order. Happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions?
Just that he's clearly on a roll here. We've got two projects, 30% under budget, and a change order removing costs. I'm not sure I've ever seen that before.
In one night?
In one night. It's like a year's worth of Rudy under bidding stuff. Hey. I was going to say in my comments, that's why we didn't see Sarah today, but okay.
You're starting off right.
I know.
Please vote.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?